All this meeting to order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, and just.
Okay, can we get started with the roll call?
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Member McIrvin.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. Well, welcome, everybody. We have a full house tonight. We have got a couple of proclamations, and the first one will be National Black History Month proclamation.
Hey, proclamation, Black, National Black History Month, whereas the beginning of Black History Month was first called Negro History Week, as conceived and announced by historian Carter G. Woodson and celebrated during February 1926. And whereas in 1976, 50 years after the first celebration, the nation has come to recognize the importance of black history in the American story, and the week was expanded to a month. And whereas confident that their struggles matter in human history, black scholars, artists, athletes, and faith and community leaders of all ages have used their talents to change the world and how the world views African Americans. And whereas African Americans, as well as other people of African descent, have been influential in shaping world politics and diplomacy. And whereas African Americans have established and maintained successful enterprises in Renton. And whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, ASALH, has selected Black Resistance in 2023 as their 97th Annual National Black History Month theme, highlighting the institutions and affiliations that have lobbied, litigated, legislated, protested, and achieved success. And whereas the city of Renton, in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive, informed city with equitable outcomes for all in support of social, economic, and racial justice. And whereas the virtual tour of Renton's African American historical sites has been videotaped and archived by the city, and now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 to be National Black History Month in the City of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in learning more about the rich history of African Americans during this special observance. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of February 2023. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Albertson.
I move to accept the proclamation as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Albertson, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, the ayes carry, and the proclamation moves forward. And tonight we have two people accepting the proclamation. We have Renton Technical College President Yoshiko Harden, and we also have Francesca Fancy Vargas. And we're going to take a couple of pictures if you guys will both come up here before we say a couple of words.
I wanted to make a comment, if that's okay. So, I think City Council and all of the guests in the room, as we gather today, I want to take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate the important contributions and achievements of the black community. This month, we recognize Black History Month as a time to pay homage to the pioneers, leaders, and trailblazers who have shaped and defined our culture and challenged the status quo across all facets of society. Howard Zinn, an American historian and social justice advocate and author, had a saying, "Omission is worse than lying, because when you lie about something, there's a paper trail that you can look back to. But when something is completely omitted, it is as if it never existed." Black History Month is about admission, centering the voices, achievements, and contributions by people of African descent to highlight the ways we've impacted our region, state, country, and beyond. On a personal note, as a college president, as the first woman and person of color to serve as president at Renton Technical College in 76 years, I am Black History, and I'm proud to stand with our students, faculty, staff, and community in observing this month as we commit ourselves to promoting diversity, equity, and justice across our society. My goal has always been to create and build the college I always wanted to attend as a black student, but only experienced in pockets. A college where students see others that look like them, they learn from faculty that share life experiences and backgrounds like them, and they learn about the contributions of people like them to the field and discipline. A college centered on social justice and equity. So let's continue to use this month to celebrate, to educate ourselves and others, and to appreciate the richness of black culture as we all work towards a future where we're all valued and have the opportunity and the support to reach our full potential. Thank you so much. This is very special, and I'm happy to accept it on behalf of the college. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's a very hard act to follow up. I'm not very good at public speaking, but I wanted to take a moment and recognize a few of the community leaders that we have here in our black community of Renton. I'd like to thank Dr. Linda and Ms. Benita Horn, as well as Mr. John Houston for continuing the work in Renton, Washington, highlighting the local historic black families who have set the stepping stones for the rest of us to work here. As we celebrate black history, I'd like everyone to remember that February is not the only month that we should celebrate the history of the black community. Black, artists, black musicians, black historians have been a counterpart of the American culture for as far as we can recall. Every aspect of the American culture has been impacted by African American culture. So I urge everyone to continue celebrating black history, not just in February, not just in Juneteenth, but for the entire year.
All right, thank you both. And next up, I know the Seahawks didn't go to the Super Bowl this year, but Renton has their own Super Bowl champions here. So we have a proclamation for the Benson Bruins Day.
Right. All right, proclamation, whereas the city of Renton celebrates and supports opportunities for our youth to have access to active enriching experiences that will develop their physical and mental health. And whereas Benson Bruins Junior Football and Cheer has been an active youth football and cheer organization in Renton since 1977. And whereas Benson Bruins Junior Football and Cheer is a Renton nonprofit that is 100% volunteer-run with a no-tryout model, where any child can participate regardless of experience or skill level. And whereas Benson Bruins Junior Football and Cheer's 2022 10U age level achieved their fourth straight undefeated championship season in Washington's Northwest Premier Junior Football League. Whereas Benson Bruins 10U age level was ranked number one on the West Coast and number 13 nationally at the end of the regular youth football season. And whereas Benson Bruins 10U age level traveled to Naples, Florida in December to represent Washington State in the Football University National Championship Tournament. And whereas Benson Bruins 10U defeated the top teams across the country in every round of the national tournament, and on December 20, 2022, defeated Maryland in the National Championship Game and became the first Renton youth football team in history to win a national championship. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim February 13, 2022, to be Benson Bruins Day in the City of Renton. And I encourage all residents to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of February 2023. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you so much. I am glad we're here to celebrate these amazing young men, many of whom I've had a chance to see play since they were seven years old, and how hard they work, and I'm glad we're honoring them. And with that, I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
I emphatically second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries, and you saw the drill. We're going to pull the photos.
Did everybody sign now?
What is the code?
Who's the coach?
Right.
You guys gotta get really close.
No, uh.
Y'all gotta squeeze in.
Okay, ready? I'm gonna just take a bunch.
Boy, she shot three. One, two, three. Hello.
There's nothing there. Guys.
Hey, boys, what do you think, huh? This is pretty awesome. First off, I'd like to thank the City of Renton and the community especially. We really appreciate you guys for giving us not only another outlet for these children, because there's so many other ways, you know, where kids don't have these kinds of choices to do something, and they end up spending it doing something else. So it's really fortunate that we get this opportunity and such a support system. So we really appreciate you guys. Clap it up for them, guys. Big thing, couldn't have done it without you, Ed. Ed and his wife, Megan, we appreciate you guys so much. Ron, the president, as well as the board members of Benson Bruins that's been around for years. It's been a privilege to be able to coach under them, and us to show everybody that if you just put in all the work and you work hard and you never quit, that you can do anything you want. And these boys have showed that. And it's been a long journey, and they continue to battle adversity, but they do it together as a team, and it's been a real honor to watch. And who would have known, national champs, you know? Clap it up, boys. I'm proud of you. I'm sorry, I forgot to thank FBU, Rob Mason. Thank you so much for allowing us to represent the state of Washington from the City of Renton and to go out there and do what we do. Appreciate you guys. Thanks.
Evening, councilmen, councilwomen, ladies. I simply wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Benson Bruins Youth Football and Cheer Program that's been established, was established in 1977. I've had the blessed privilege of being able to lead this program during the last five to six years, and it has been nothing but a privilege. And the only thing I wanted to articulate, one, is appreciation to you. Number two, appreciation to the program, the board members, but for these young men, young ladies, our team mothers, our coaches, thank you, because ultimately, you did it. And we could sit here and put foundations in place, but ultimately, you all were able to execute it and show the discipline. What I appreciate is we live in a day and age in which you have parents and children who want to swap out at, you know, anytime they have an issue with anything going on. And we've built a program within your city that's all about discipline, attitude, teamwork, and effort. And we charge a fee at the end of the day, so that it's a small fee and it's a nominal fee compared with what so many programs around that charge that you have to pay to ultimately play. And where people don't know is Chris and I had this discussion years ago, and we said, you know what, we'd like to have something here where children and parents can commit and commit to a culture, a culture of excellence, one in which we're not perfect, but we're always pressing for perfection, and one in which people can commit and constantly have the conversation and make each other better, in which kids can stay together and play together all the way up through high school, so that our kids can be some of the top kids. And whether you all know it or not, many of the top kids in our state have come through our city and our youth nonprofit program. So I'm proud of the city. I'm proud of the program. I'm proud of these coaches. I'm proud of these young men. And we simply wanted to say thank you. And we just continue, we look forward to the opportunity to continue to partner with our city in terms of how we can continue to improve and be better and continue to have access to resources that enabled us to compete with so many programs that charge thousands of dollars just for their children to be able to play. So we'll continue to keep doing what we're doing. We appreciate you for the recognition. And again, young men, young ladies, thank you for just what you all did and what you all continue to do. Keep going, keep pressing, stay together, keep winning. It won't change. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming to the council meeting tonight. It's fantastic. Listening to your coach, Chris, and the president, Ron, speak tonight, it's not a surprise that you guys did as well as you did. You have fantastic leaders. We want to thank you for the effort you put into helping groom our young kids that are coming up in all of our neighborhoods. So thank you very much. All right, and now we get to get on to some work. Next up is the administrative report.
All right. This year's Black History Month theme is Black Resistance, as selected by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. This theme was chosen to highlight the institutions and affiliations that have lobbied, litigated, legislated, protested, and achieved success. Black History Month events in Renton include unity and perseverance, an open forum discussion centered around the black culture and community on Saturday, February 18 at 12:30 at Hyatt Regency Lake, Washington at Renton Southport. This event is sponsored by the Renton King County Alliance for Justice, Elevate PR Management, and Sync Seattle. Also sponsored by these groups is Melanin Magic Disco on February 18 at 8:00 PM to 12:00 AM, also at Hyatt Regency Lake, Washington. For more information on these events and other Black History Month events around the region, please visit our website. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, road closures, and I-405 work happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That is all, sir.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have audience comment. We have three people signed up today. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name, city of residence, and the topic you'd like to discuss. You'll have three minutes. There'll be a little clock right in front of you, and when the light hits yellow, please start wrapping up your comments. And first up is Sandra Workman.
Hi, my name is Sandra Workman. I'm from Renton, and I just wanted to know if, what is going on with the Renton Red Lion Inn Hotel, and that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the Red Lion Inn is a private property, and if you want to stick around, we can get you some information at the end of the council meeting here. Okay? All right, thank you. Next up is Michael Westgard. Michael Westgard? Nope. Okay, Eric Hanson?
Eric Hanson. I've been a resident of Renton for about seven years, and I've recently moved into downtown Renton for about a year and a half. Yeah, I wanted to just kind of talk about my experience and talk about some of the issues I've seen. So crime and drug use in particular. So my experience is I've been, my car has been broken into twice in the past six months or so. One time they stole something, the second time they didn't steal anything. And then two days after it was broken into, I saw someone like looking under my car, assuming they were gonna look for a catalytic converter to steal. And I had a kind of disappointing experience. I called the non-emergency line, and they didn't, they told me to have a picture of the perpetrator, and they told me to just keep the picture and in case something happens, they can use that as evidence. I was just kind of like, like nothing was gonna happen. He didn't commit a crime, but he was going to. So anyways, this kind of threw my security off from living in Renton, and I downloaded apps. You probably know all the apps, but like one was Neighbors, and they, they're posting things all the time on like crime and what's happening in the area. And like, we all know crime's up in the area. I think crime's up 24% in Seattle. And just, sorry, the recording's bothering me. But anyways, I just want to talk about like, what's driving the increase in crime and talking about it as like a Renton problem and not like a King County problem or a Washington State problem. I think, you know, just walking around Renton, the other day I was asked if I had fentanyl. Like, I think there's drug use pretty prevalent around the downtown area, but also it's happening in the landing. I was actually asked around the landing if I had fentanyl. And I've walked around the neighborhood. I actually just was at the bus stop the other day and talking to this individual, and he disclosed that he was a fentanyl dealer, and he was very open about it. He was, you know, actually very human. You know, I don't know if we have a disposition that they're not, they are people in need. He was talking me about what my career was, and he was looking for career opportunities. He was saying like, I'd like to go to college, and wondering if she should go down like a technical path or going to like, to get his master's degree. So I don't necessarily need a comment, but I think, I don't think crime is going down. I think it's probably going to increase in the future. I wanted to just plant the seed of what steps can we do to, you know, help these people that are committing crimes and also hold them accountable. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, next up is the consent agenda. There are 11 items for council consideration. Are there any that council would like pulled for separate discussion?
Hearing none, Mr. Mayor. I move the council concur with the consent agenda as published.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council concur with the consent agenda as published. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albertson.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has six reports to present.
The Finance Committee committee reports, first is regarding approval of claims of payroll vouchers. Finance Committee approves following payments. Council payable total payment, thirteen million, seven eighty, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers and, I can't read, and four wire transfers, two payroll total payment of one million, eight hundred fourteen thousand, seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents for payroll vouchers, including six hundred and thirty-two direct deposits and fourteen checks. This is the January 1 through 15 pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding a reorganization for the City Clerk Division. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the request to implement a reorganization of the City Clerk Division to support the implementation of a two-year limited-term public records analyst full-time equivalent position at salary grade A20. The Q1 budget adjustment will reflect the allocation of budget dollars for this reorganization. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor. In order to be able to be efficient with all the requests that we are receiving for public records, the recommendation of the council is that we approve a temporary position to help with the city clerk, the deputy city clerk, and also try to figure out if we are going to be needing one or two, or in the future, the legislative, again, assistant to afford to hire more people to be able to fulfill all these requests, because it's overwhelming our city clerk's department. So with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next report is regarding SNAP incentive agreement amendment number four. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve amendment four to the 2020 Washington State Department of Health Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Incentive Agreement to accept additional, to accept an additional twenty-two thousand three hundred fifty dollars in funding at the Renton Farmers Market for January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next report is regarding a engineering contract with KPG Somus Incorporated. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve contract 22381 with KPG Somus Incorporated for two hundred eleven thousand, ninety-seven dollars for construction engineering services on the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four project. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
We're in phase four of the finishing the project for the Rainier Avenue. We just have one more phase, which is five, phase five. So with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. In discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next is regarding a contract award and fund transfer request for the Safe Routes to Transit construction contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to award the construction contract to Caymans Construction Incorporated. This is for the Safe Routes to Transit project, in the amount of three hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents, and approve a budget transfer. and approve a budget transfer in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance in Fund 317 to cover anticipated expenditures for the construction phase of this project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
It's Councilmember Perez.
This project is in the Sonser area and is very needed for the protection of pedestrians as well as people that use bicycles as a form of transportation. With that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the final report for the Finance Committee is regarding the ratification of a grant award from the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to ratify the grant agreement with the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs for the acceptance of two thousand eight hundred dollars in grant funds for the purchase of two radar with rear antenna devices to be used for enhanced traffic safety programs. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberson, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Okay, next up is Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
The member McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We move on to legislation, which we have none, so we're gonna move on to new business. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, February 20th, President's Day will be observed, and there will be no council meetings. On Monday, February 27th, at 5:45 PM, the Committee of the Whole will be meeting in the council chambers and via video conference. We have one item on the agenda, and that is the neighborhood program update. And then on Monday, February 27th, at 7:00 PM, we'll have our general council meeting here in council chambers and video, via video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one order of new business. I would like to motion that the city of Renton do research on the benefits and impacts of adopting similar ordinances of the city of Burian and city of Sea-Tac to raise the minimum wage to nineteen dollars an hour for businesses that it applies to.
Okay, the motion is to, to send to administration for research the benefits and impacts of the ordinance that was established in both Tukwila and Sea-Tac.
Second. Tukwila and Sea-Tac, yes, correct.
Tukwila and Sea-Tac.
Thank you for the correction. Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Rivera and second by Councilmember O'Halloran. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Just for clarification, the motion is to do a research to bring it for council concur or to refer it to ballot?
Or just? Council concur.
What's that?
To bring it for council concur.
I would like to amend the motion, if I may.
Okay.
I would like to move to refer the subject for the administration to bring the recommendation to place it on a ballot.
To what?
Place it on a ballot.
To place it on a ballot.
And may I ask, is that we're allowed, are we allowed to do that? Or does that have to be passed by signatures? Are we allowed to put it on the ballot?
No, we're about, allowed to do it.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may ask the city attorney to help us with the process, if possible? Because...
Yes, Councilmember Alberson.
Councilmember Perez.
I think we're, before we...
Before we do that?
There's a process issue here.
Yeah.
I think they're trying to figure it out.
We're discussing the amendment. Yeah. So... We could bring back the findings and let them decide at that time what they want to do. Couldn't we do it?
I like that better.
Yeah, we don't have to, we don't have to do either.
We have to finish the, so we have a main motion, and then we have an amendment to a main motion? So we have to finish the amendment?
I can amend my motion.
Okay.
I move that we refer it to administration, so they bring a recommendation if the suggestion is to place it on a ballot or to do a consumatico.
Second. Can I second yours? There we go.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't know exactly how to do this, but I would like to amend the motion to...
That we can't. We, I think we can only do two, right?
No, you can amend an amendment.
We can do one more amendment? Okay. We're amending the amendment.
Bring the matter to refer to administration to evaluate the impact and potential benefits of raising the minimum wage within the city of Renton to bring it back to council for council consideration of the further action, whatever that may be.
Second.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor, which is to amend the amendment. Or do I just?
I have to vote in the, all the amendments.
I have to vote on all the amendments, right?
Yes.
Yeah. This is a first. You gotta walk me through this one.
Yeah, I know.
I'm so sorry.
So we have a first and a second on, on that one, which is basically to bring it back. Any more discussion? Please, no?
No.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Okay, motion carries. Now we're gonna, we've got a first.
Your amendment eliminated my amendment, so we have to, to vote no on my amendment.
Correct.
Without the clearance.
Yes.
So that, right, so that was to place it on the ballot. That was the...
Yeah. And...
Or, I'm sorry, it was to either place it on the ballot or...
Do a calcimatic vote.
Yeah.
Or do calcimatic action. Right.
So, okay, so we've got a sec, a first from Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberson to place it on the ballot or calcimatic. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. I'll oppose nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Motion fails.
My motion failed.
And then there was a, another motion.
There was a motion.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm with you. Okay.
The other motion was to, uh, place it on the ballot.
It was to place it on?
Right, the amendment. So we had three amendments.
Yeah.
The last amendment actually passed.
Yeah. Okay, so this one is to do the research and benefits about the impact of the ordinance that's in Tukwila and Sea-Tac for the nineteen dollar an hour.
Correct. Still on the, still on the first amendment.
That was the first one.
So we're still on the...
There are only two amendments.
Yeah.
Three. She amended hers twice.
Oh. Really? We're counting that one too? Wow.
Amendment, my, my amendment.
Oh, they gotta back up then.
She got a many amendment.
Rivera seconded it.
So what was your first one, then?
The difference is what's to place it on the ballot. Recommendation to, it would place it on the ballot.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. All right, so that motion was made by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberson, and that was to either place it on the ballot.
To place it on the ballot.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to confuse this, but technically I didn't second that one because I was saying I was going to, but we had discussed. So it did not get seconded.
No, it did. Councilmember Rivera. We didn't second it.
Oh, that one. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Could the motion maker rescind their motion?
I'd rescind my motion.
There we go.
Like that. We remember that one.
So now we are voting on the main motion as amended.
Okay, yes.
The main motion was to research the benefit and impacts to raise the minimum wage something to do with the ordinances in...
In Burian and Tukwila and Sea-Tac.
Tukwila and Sea-Tac. And then as amended, to refer it to the administration, right? Instead of, right back on the council agenda and for council's consideration as to whether it should, for further action.
Yeah.
Whatever that may be.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. I'll clean it up in a minute.
Yep.
Thank you, Jason.
All right. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Who's on first? I'm sorry. I couldn't resist. I couldn't resist. Forgive me.
Okay, any other new business, Councilmember Rivera?
You really want to ask me that?
I just want to, I'm just...
No, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Alberson.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have new business with Public Safety Committee. We have a special committee meeting. So it's February 27, 2023, on Monday at 4:45 PM.